Call to order the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Monday, February 24th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll.
Alder President Cronin.
Present.
Alder President Gaskell.
Here.
Alder President Cole.
Here.
Alder President Posey. I'm sorry. Alder President Ricky.
Here.
Alder President Touche.
Present.
Alder Persons Journey and Posey are absent and excused.
So we have six of eight, which is quorum, which means we can proceed. Next we'll move on to item four, which is public comment. This is the one time that the public gets to speak if anyone wants to speak. Oh, it's still here? I don't know. This is the only, this is like the thing I have the most trouble with. I'm sure Andy's gonna yell at me after the meeting, but anyways, he could yell at me now, too. No, we are on item four, which is public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, this is the only time to do so during this meeting. Not seeing anyone making their way to the podium. We'll move on to item five, which is approve the minutes from the February 10th, 2020 Common Council meeting.
I recommend approval.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cole, I think. Last chance for corrections to the minutes. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the February 10th, 2020 Common Council meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Minutes are approved. We are on item six, which is mayor's business. I don't have anything today. We'll move on to item seven, which is announcements. Anyone from the council have an announcement? Seeing no hands, we will move on to item eight, which is the administrators' report. Mr. Sayre.
Thank you. I don't have too much tonight. We do have two active public hearings. We have a public hearing at 103 North Franklin Street for a zoning map amendment and conditional use permit for a light industrial activity incidental to indoor sales or service land use. And we also have a public hearing at Epic Systems Corporations for a rezoning. A few of our updates that we have is we're continuing to work on the downtown plantings. That's something we did last year as well in Hometown Junction Park. We're working with Glacier Landscaping again on that to look at plantings there and also potentially expanding the plantings as well in that location and elsewhere in the city. Those are funded with room tax dollars, if you're curious. We did have an open house for the Sugar Creek School RFP. That was last Friday. We had about 30 to 40 people attend that. It was a good, nice turnout for that. Proposals for that are due on March 30th. And finally, we had a spring primary election on February 18th. The Badger books were used at the library while paper ballots were utilized at City Hall. We had some challenges this year because of some illnesses with city staff, but I think overall staff did a great job helping up and pitching in where help was needed. So thank you for staff on, for helping with that and making it a smooth process. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Any questions for Mr. Sayre? Alder Cole.
I'd just like to make a comment that I voted at the library and the Badger books worked really nicely, so I'm just saying thanks to Ellen for all of her hard work in getting those up and running.
Great, thank you. Not just me, though. It's not a one-person show, so I want to thank staff very much. It was a little bit stressful, but we got through it, so thank you.
Any other questions on the administrators' report? Alder Cronin.
For the hearing on 103 North Franklin, is it my understanding that the building that exists there is gonna stay, correct?
Correct. They would fix up the existing building and use it as an office, then also a space for making like custom bats, baseball bats. And they also do some laser engraving type work there as well for like mugs and memorabilia type items. But the building would remain.
And is there a requirement that neighbors within a specific distance were notified?
Yep. So for any public hearing, is that we do a class two notice in the newspaper, so it's in the newspaper twice. We also post the projects on the city's website. And then we also mail all property owners within 200 feet a letter notifying them the hearing. Then we also put in the ground an actual sign as well. So all that has been taken care of.
Any other comments on the administrators' report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the engineers' report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. For the well six pumping station construction, all interior walls and associated plumbing and electrical items in the walls have been completed. Equipment and associated piping, ductwork, plumbing, and electrical items are in the process of being delivered and installed. And for the high school traffic improvements project, traffic continues in the same locations along Stewart Woods Road and Wildcat Way. There will continue to be periodic grading activities throughout the winter. Water main and storm sewer installation along these roads began on the 17th of February and will continue over the next month or so. The Military Ridge State Trail reroute around the culvert work area will remain open throughout Military Ridge State Trail, Wildcat Way, pedestrian culvert work, and trail restoration. The trail and reroute may close for a short duration in the next month or so to complete the trail restoration. So I guess with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions on the engineers' report? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 10, which is the committee reports. First up, we have finance committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion regarding the payment of the bills in the amount of $18,129,164.25.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cronin. Alder Kemp.
For the sake of discussion, we had to pay taxes, so there's a tax bill to the County of Dane in the amount of $2,733,344.57. A tax bill to M A T C in the amount of $832,895.8 and a payment to the Verona School District in the amount of $12,42,864.28. We also paid a bill to Sun Prairie for the police data system that we share with them in the amount of $107,669.6. We added two hybrid squad cars to our fleet for the police department, which is good. That was $77,556. And then finally, there was a payment of $1 million for the school road payment that we owe.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Kemp?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to 10B, which is Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche.
Thank you. Item 10B1, I make an emotion to approve a professional services agreement with Core Terra for Core Web Enhanced Facility Mapping Services for Utility Locating Management Software.
That was, that was the second item.
My apologies. My sheets are out of order. Let's start over again. I make an emotion to approve a developers' agreement for Woods at Cathedral Point Phase One Public Improvements.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche.
The city and staff attorney have worked with the developer for Woods at Cathedral Point in preparation for the developer agreement Phase One, including 44 lots. The agreement anticipates that the construction of the public improvements to serve the phase will commence in early April 2020 and will be substantially completed by October of the same year. Pending permit approvals, Phase One is the area at the southeast quadrant of the intersection of County Highway M and Range Trail just east of the Cathedral Point subdivision.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on the motion? Mr. Sayre.
Just one recommendation from staff would be to put a condition on there that the development agreement is subject to final review by the city attorney and city administrator. We have a couple of minor changes we have to make to it.
Okay. Please add that to my motion.
Is that okay with the second as well? Okay. With that addition, any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the developers' agreement for the Woods at Cathedral Point Phase One Public Improvements with the conditions specified, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche.
All right. Let's do it again. I make an emotion to approve a professional services agreement with Core Terra for Core Web Enhanced Facility Mapping Services for Utility Locating Management Software.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Gaskell. Alder Touche.
Core Web is management software that overlays the city's utility GIS system with Digger's Hotline tickets. The city of Verona receives approximately 4,500 tickets, that's 17 per day, to locate, for, per year, that we have to investigate, prioritize, and locate if we have utilities in the area, all within 72 hours. Core Web highlighted capabilities allows the following efficiencies for our staff: graphically investigate areas requested to be located on tickets via GIS; clear or assign tickets within minutes; graphically manage workflow and assign tickets to staff for priority areas; and manage tickets and historical data for seven years to assist the city with any claims. The startup fee for this service is $2,500, and then there's an annual fee of $5,500 per year for a three-year agreement. Additional training may be required at the startup, but that will be determined at rollout of the program. Just for reference, MMSD rolled out this program in November this last year, and it's been very successful. That is all.
Thank you. You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on the motion? Alder Ricky.
I was just wondering if the city engineer would please give an explanation of why this would be good for the city?
Ms. Fisher.
Sure. Well, this is being driven really by Therins Group, so it's more a utility locate type thing. But it's just a way to automate the process, because my understanding is right now you get faxes, so it's a little bit old school. It's hard to manage. So it just provides a little bit more of a, an app type version for them to manage the locates that get requested.
Anything to add, Mr. Jacobson?
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor Diaz. So we, as I'm Touche said, we get 17 a day. That fluctuates throughout the year. But the challenge, so if anyone puts a ticket in, you put a mailbox in, you put a fence post in, et cetera. The description the Digger's Hotline gives is very broad. You put a point on a map, well, they extend that out 300 feet, locate 300 feet this way, this way. So the area goes from being a dot on a map to a large box, you know, the size of City Hall. This is gonna allow us to enhance by overlaying what that area is in our system versus what is actually on the Digger's ticket, so we can compress that work zone. So basically not overlocating or excluding areas that we have no facilities in, because it doesn't matter. Digger's does not know where we have utilities. So all they have is our municipal boundary. So if we get a locate at any of your properties, they have no idea if there's water, sewer, or storm in front of it. We only know that. Digger's knows the municipal limits, so once a ticket is put in that has a Verona address within our box, we're notified. So that's how it's gonna increase workflow. Does that answer your question, Heather?
Anything further, Alder Ricky? Motion before the body. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the professional services agreement with Core Terra for Core Web Enhanced Facility Mapping Services for Utility Locating Management Software, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche.
Thank you. Next up, item 10B3, I make an emotion to approve a professional services agreement with AECOM for Project ID 2020-110 Verona 2020 Stormwater Services.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cronin, I think. Alder Touche.
This consulting services agreement is to perform the following tasks: stormwater permit administration; prepare and submit an annual report per Wisconsin DNR permit regulations; 10 meetings with Madison Area Municipal Stormwater Partnership Group; perform dry weather monitoring, investigation, and reporting; and exploration/investigation of flood mitigation opportunities. Total estimated fee is not to exceed $20,900.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the professional services agreement with AECOM for Project ID 2020-110 Verona 2020 Stormwater Services, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche.
Next up, 10B4, I make an emotion to approve a professional services agreement with Baker Tilly for Project ID 2020-111 Utility Impact Fee, not to exceed $13,500.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche.
The city of Verona impact fee was established in 1998, and the sewer connection fee was established in 1998 with the rates effective in 2003. The city has recently completed the water utility master plan in 2015 and its sanitary sewer utility master planning 2019, identifying improvements necessary for expansion of the city utility service area. Impact and connection fees are used to finance these improvements. Impact connection fees are paid for by future users of the utility, not the existing users. This is a joint effort between the city and Baker Tilly. Baker Tilly will be creating the methodology, performing data analysis, financial analysis, create the rate structure, and reports for each utility. City staff will be identifying the improvements necessary and cost estimates of these improvements. We do expect the range to be less than 1350. We think it'll be around $10,500 up to $13,500, excuse me. That is all.
You've heard the explanation? Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the professional services agreement with Baker Tilly for Project ID 2020-111 Utility Impact Fee Design, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Touche.
Next up is 10B5, I make an emotion to approve a professional services agreement with CUNY Architects LLC for Project ID 2019-111 Public Works Facility Design, not to exceed $481,163 and contingent upon legal review.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Gaskell. Alder Touche.
The city received five responses back in November of last year to the request for proposals in regards to the design contract for a public works facility project. The city of Verona's public works, planning, parks, and administration staff reviewed the proposal. The proposal prices ranged from $481,163 all the way up to $973,969. Staff shortlisted two consultants in, for in-person interviews back in December of last year. Staff also contacted three competing project references listed in the recommended consultant's response to the RFP. After the interviews, reference checks, and staff discussions, they are recommending that the contract be awarded to CUNY Architects of Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin. The contract shall not exceed, as I said before, $481,163 and will be, as I said, contingent upon legal review.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on the motion?
I just want to add, I'm just realizing, Neil, so this is money that we've already budgeted for. This came out of some borrowing from last year, so this is money we already have right now. So we should be go. I think, if I remember right, the total project cost is estimated to be around $14 million. This is part of that 14.
Understood. Any further discussion on the motion before the body? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the professional services agreement with CUNY Architect LLC for Project ID 2019-111 Public Works Facility Design in an amount not to exceed $481,163 and contingent upon legal review of the contract language, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further, Alder Touche?
That is all.
All right. We will move on to item 11, new business. First up, we have a discussion of possible action regarding current litigation involving a condemnation claim made by property owner related to County Highway M/PD, the M and PD road project. And before I would entertain a motion to go into closed session, I understand Mr. Kleinemeyer has an update for us.
Sure. I can let you know that, so this is litigation related to the large road project at the intersection of County Highway M and PD. It is a just compensation action. So what's happened is the, the city had provided a payment to the property owner for the land that was taken as part of the project, and pursuant to the property owner's statutory rights, they have filed a lawsuit seeking more compensation. The trial is scheduled at this point for March 9th through the 12th, so it's right around the corner. And staff believes this is an appropriate time to come and provide, I guess, a little bit more information to the council in closed session regarding our strategy and other discussions that have taken place recently regarding the lawsuit.
Any questions for Mr. Kleinemeyer in open session? Seeing none. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I can do it.
Alder Cole.
I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session regarding current litigation involving condemnation claim made by the property owner related to County Highway M/PD road project. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Section 19.85 Per N1 Pr N G of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel who either orally or in writing will advise the governmental body on strategy to be adopted with respect to current or likely litigation. The common council may reconvene in open session and take action on the closed session item.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. And this, of course, is a roll call vote. If the clerk would read the roll.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Gaskell?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche.
Aye.
And with that, we will move into closed session as soon as we are off there. And with that, we will move into closed session as soon as we are off there.
Back in open session at 8:13 PM, we had a lot of discussion about upcoming litigation and when there's any official action it'll be announced publicly. With that, we will move on to item 11B which is discussion and possible action regarding the approval of operator licenses. Claire Clark?
Thank you. I need a motion please to approve operator licenses as presented by the city clerk.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second? Second by Alder Camp. All those in favor of approving the operator licenses say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes. We are on item 12 adjournment. A motion to adjourn is in order. Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second? Second by Alder Cronin. All those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we adjourned at 8:14 PM. Thank you.